Exactly.
Exactly, okay Renee. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you don't mind.
Carol Gomes.
Here.
Dean Bott.
Here.
Sherri Barrett.
Here.
Robert Clark. Derek Gracia.
Here.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Laura Ramston.
Here.
Will Stinklet.
Here.
Okay, if everyone could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording the meeting? We have late cam. Is that it? We're good? Thank you. Public participation? Is anybody here for public participation? No? Going once, going twice? Okay. Acceptance of minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 9.
So moved.
Second.
There's no minutes attached.
I forgot to put them in the packet.
Okay. Did everybody see them on?
They were in the packet.
Yeah, they were in the packet.
Everybody's, everybody okay with that? Okay, so I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass is unanimous. Okay. Presentations to the school committee.
Well unfortunately, Robert cannot be with us, but...
Well, you get the full spotlight.
Absolutely! Full spotlight for you.
Last for Robert.
Before you actually start, we just have a little something on behalf of the committee.
Thank you very much. Should I open it now or later?
You can open it whenever.
I'll open it later. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your updates. It's been great.
It's brownies!
Well, in recent events...
And I will turn things over to you.
In recent events, the athletic boosters have brought back the Laker Pass raffle for students. And participating in the raffle, you would potentially receive a parking spot, a yearbook, a prom ticket, a ticket to the sophomore ring dance, a homecoming ticket, and free admission to either any sports or theater events partaking in the school. Also, the junior and senior prom recently took place on May 12th at Luciano's Lake Pearl. It was an excellent event, enjoyed by all of those who attended. Our Frederick Stane participants have returned. Please visit the school website for photos of their amazing experience and their exciting trip. These past weeks, fifty-three percent of our juniors and seniors took AP exams. There have been a significantly increased amount of students taking AP exams in the last year, and we look forward to more growth in Apoonequid students challenging themselves in our AP programs. Forty percent, or 311 of our students, have achieved honor roll for quarter three. And Jackie Bruno, an Apoonequid alumni from NBC 10, visited the school and addressed our journalism class. Recently, at a state coaches' invitational track meet, Rachel Bonboni placed fifth place in the high jump, and Jimmy Soprazza took first place in the javelin. And also recently, class and student council elections took place, and we are very excited to see the positive change that these students will bring to our school. Next week begins our week-long send-off of the class of 2018, with Tuesday being Senior Sendoff Day, along with Senior Awards Night. Wednesday and Thursday, the seniors will be participating in graduation rehearsal, and on Thursday night, they will have their senior banquet. And lastly, on Friday, they will be doing their senior walk in the morning and graduating in the evening. And also recently, Mrs. Nardi's AP class, AP Spanish class I should say, took a field trip to El Mariachi in Tonin. This is a fun way for students to experience what speaking Spanish is in a real-life environment. Our physics students took a field trip to Six Flags for their theme park, for the theme parks' annual Physics Day. While the students were able to see, while there, they were able to experience the physics behind the rides in the park. And lastly, a special congratulations to the music department for putting on a spectacular spring concert. It was extremely entertaining and successful for all those who were a part. And that is all.
Thank you so much. Well, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for attending all of those meetings and for the great updates.
Have an excellent evening, and thank you very much.
Yes!
Congratulations!
Enjoy the prom.
Oh, you're funny. Okay. Top ten students. Before I turn things over to Dr. Starkey, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming. Parents, students, I know what such a busy time of year this is, and also such an exciting time, so I just want to thank everyone for coming. And, and to, I think I can speak on behalf of the committee when I really say, this is our favorite meeting of the year, and if you've been to any of our meetings, you can understand why. But we really do, we, we love to hear your speeches, and, and to have all ten of you here and all eight of us here is really a feat in itself, so we really look forward to hearing all of your speeches and the advice that you have to give us. So, without further ado, Dr. Starkey, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. It's a tremendous honor to be here tonight to present to you the top ten students in the class of 2018. I ask you to be students, please stand and remain standing when your name is called. We have Leeann Kendall, our auditorian, Hannah Darling, salutatorian, Nicole Luzen, Shannon Carmichael, Owen Foster, Liam Fahey, Cameron Patrick, Paige Patrico, Faith Co., and Marcos Felipe. These students represent the very best of Apoonequid. Collectively, they have taken numerous advanced placement in honors courses. They are members of the National Honor Society, and they have completed more than 200 hours of community service. Owen did 100 alone. They are student athletes, student performers, club members, and they have a tremendous amount of Laker pride. They are a delight and privilege to know. They have, as our core values proclaim, achieved, been resilient, engaged in honorable behavior, and advocated for themselves and others. And each of these young men and women has summarized his or her parting thoughts and will approach the podium to share them with you tonight. Guys can have a seat, and we start with Marcos.
Hello, I'm Marcos Felipe, and I am 10th in the class of 2018. During my time at Apoonequid, I received a certificate of excellence in biology, chemistry, AP chemistry, and I've also had great success in DECA, winning at the district, state, and national levels. DECA has been one of my favorite parts of my high school experience. The past two years, I have gone to the national competition. Last year, I went to Anaheim and attended the Leadership Conference, where I was able to meet people from across the country, and had an amazing time. My most interesting class, AP Psych, came during my senior year recently. Not only did I find the curriculum very engaging, but Mr. Giolando was one of the most well-prepared teachers I've had, and he taught the class extremely well. Mrs. Rosa has been my mentor throughout high school. He is also the DECA advisor, and he guided me to success in DECA. And beyond just academically, he's provided personal guidance, and our relationship extends beyond the classroom. He has become a mentor and a friend. Most people have helped me, many other people have helped me along, along my path, specifically my brother, parents, and friends. They've helped me grow and develop into a person I am today, and I'm grateful for that. Next year, I'll be attending Worcester State University for Computer Science. If I could give any advice to the school committee, it would be to increase funding to the art department. It seems to be somewhat of an afterthought at times, but the arts are essential for nearly every field. Creativity is an innate skill, and everyone in art classes gains this and is able to tap into their creativity and unlock their full potential in whichever field they may choose to go into.
Congratulations, good luck. Congratulations, you're welcome.
Oh, good.
Faith Co.
Hello, my name is Faith Co., and I would like to begin by thanking everyone for giving us the opportunity to speak in front of you today. During my time at Apoonequid, I have participated in various clubs and activities. I was an active member of SHAPE in the National Honor Society in my last few years, and have been a member of DECA and Student Council since freshman year. With that being said, some of my fondest memories here at ARHS were being chairs of different committees and student council, such as creating the teacher appreciation video for Do Be Nice Week and planning this year's Spring Pep Rally. These activities allowed me to use my creativity and work together with others to create great new events for my classmates to enjoy. Regarding academics, my most challenging classes were AP Biology and AP Chemistry. Although they were stressful, they taught me how to manage my time wisely and made me better prepared for my courses in college. My most interesting course was Biochemistry and VHS, because the information we learned and the discussions we participated in related to present day and the online aspect allowed me to become familiar with a new style of learning that I'll most likely face in the future. Throughout my years here, I've had many teachers that impacted my life, and the most significant are Mrs. Ferrera, Mrs. Nardi, and Mr. Solomon. They all pushed me to be the best student I could be and provided positive environments where I felt I could freely share my ideas and ask questions without being judged. I would like to thank these teachers, as well as Mr. Wensek for always being there to listen to me, Mr. Muse for sparking my interest in biology, and all my friends and family for their constant love and support. Next year, I'll be attending the University of New England, where I'll be completing a seven-year accelerated dental program with the hope of becoming a geriatric dentist. My decision to work with the elderly patients stemmed from my time working at Island Terrace Nursing Home in Lakeville for two years until its closure this past year. I love spending time, becoming friends with the residents, making connections and hearing their stories, and helping them in any way I could. Finally, the advice I would give to the school committee is to put more funding into our heating systems and to provide AP books for each class, so every student has a chance to take the courses they want and are not hindered by finances. Again, I would like to thank everyone for their time and their cooperation in making our school a better place. Thank you.
Paige Patrico.
It is an incredible honor to stand up here today before you to celebrate the academic success of the class of 2018. However, class ranks our only numbers. It does not define who we are today, and it most certainly will not define who we will be in the future. It is how we carry ourselves through life. What I truly will remember about Freetown-Lakeville School District is my bus driver Pauline Goddette and my guidance counselor, Mrs. Cronin. They showed me what it meant to be a truly compassionate person and to look beyond the superficial side of things. Mrs. Goddette has been my bus driver since kindergarten and looked out for not only my sister and I, but also our home. Without Mrs. Cronin, I would never have been able to complete dual enrollment and would not have accomplished what I have this past year. During my high school experience, I am most proud of what I have accomplished outside of the classrooms. I represented Apoonequid at the 2017 Johns Hopkins Medical Leadership Summit in Baltimore, where I not only learned about medicine, but I also learned about what it means to be truly alive and met lifetime-long friends. I became a counselor at the Birch Center, a program for children with special needs, which has forever changed my outlook on life. I also tutored middle school students and taught CCD at St. Bernard's Church, which became, became a passion of mine. I would like to thank my parents and my sister Alana for their unconditional love and support, as well as the rest of my family. Without them, nothing I have accomplished thus far would have been possible. And while I may be moving away and starting this new adventure in my life, I know that whenever I am with any of you, I am always home. I would also like to thank my forever friend Maya. Cousins truly are your first best friends, and I am so lucky to be able to have you in my life. You have always been my number one fan, and I cannot wait to keep cheering you on for the rest of our lives. In the fall, I will continue my education at Worcester State University in the nursing program, as well as in the honors program. I plan to continue my education after obtaining my bachelor's degree to become a nurse and estheticist. Congratulations to the class of 2018 top ten.
Good nursing kid. I think you said soon.
Cameron Patrick.
Hello. I'm sorry, guys, I'm not the great public speaker at all, but here we go. Hi, my name is Cameron Patrick, and I am ranked number seven in the class of 2018. Throughout the past 699 school days that I've spent here, granted, I have missed my fair share, I've received an education in the truest sense of the word. From freshman biology with... Sorry, guys. From freshman... I am a terrible, I am a terrible speaker. I sincerely apologize again. From freshman biology with... From freshman biology with... Okay, sorry. From freshman... From biology...
That's okay. Why don't you look at me?
Guys, I'm so sorry.
No, you have nothing to apologize for. I'm sorry, but you're number seven.
Cam, I'll, Cam, I'll share this with you. Here I am superintendent, not a good public speaker, and was not able to be invited to the top ten. I took this job just so I could come to this event. So, so, so don't, so don't be intimidated by us here. Speak the bar really.
From freshman, but, from freshman biology with, with Mr. Muse to, to AP, to AP biology with, with Mrs. Ferrera, from College Prep to College Report One, with, with, with Mr. Robinson to AP Calculus with, 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 with Ms. Gray, I have truly gained in knowledge and wisdom at Apoonequid. It hasn't always been easy, but I've always done my best to rise in challenge. Everything I've learned here at Apoonequid will serve me well when I attend Colgate University in the fall to take pre-med classes and major in, in neuroscience, taking another step in chasing my, in chasing my childhood dreams of becoming a doctor. However, my education here hasn't, hasn't been contained to textbooks and lab walks. From the two seasons of, yeah, from the two seasons of... From the two seasons of... I'm sorry. Almost done. From the two seasons of... From the two seasons of lacrosse that I played under Mr. Lee, which taught me how to get back up, no matter how many times I get knocked down, to all the DECA trips I've taken with, with Mr. Rosa, all of them. Each thing that I have done here has made me more wise in ways of the world as a whole. The one group that I could not have accomplished any of this without is my family. You've all supported me in some vital, special way, and, and I would, and I would like to think that I'll carry on the peace of each of you into my next chapter. From my dad helping me make up stuff for Honest Physics last year, to my mom making sure that I, that... To my mom, I'm making sure that... We're almost done, guys, I'm sorry. To my mom, I'm making sure that... Yeah, yeah. Guys, I'm so sorry. I'm gonna sit here. So, from my dad helping me make up, make up stuff for Honest Physics last year, to my mom, I'm making sure that I wake up every single day, to my grandfather, who, who, when I was young, he, he would, he would, he would enter up to my house every single day from, from, from Annabedford, and he would read to me. And that is a very, very small gesture, but small things like that are incredibly important in that, and, and in some ways, that, and in some ways, that small act kind of... Yeah, yeah. And in some ways, that small act made me who I am today. So if there is any small piece of wisdom that I would like to, to impart on you guys, it would just be to go and find quality people, find quality teachers, and that, and try to support them, because, yeah, that's about it. Yeah, it's, it's very, very simple, but, but, but quality people, they make the whole world go around. That's about it, guys, thank you. I'm sorry.
Liam Fahey.
Good evening. My name is Liam Fahey, and I'm proud to be among the top ten students in the class of 2018. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the FLRSD School Committee and the ARHS Administration for inviting me to speak at tonight's meeting. I'd also like to start by saying a little bit about myself. In conjunction with maintaining my high academic standing, I've been part of multiple extracurricular activities throughout my four years at Apoonequid. First off, I've swam for both the Freetown-Lakeville Warriors and the Lakers. As a Laker, I was recognized as a member of the South Coast Conference and Standard Times Boys Swimming All-Star Teams. Along with this, I received both the MVP and sportsmanship awards this past swim season. In addition to swimming, I have been part of Apoonequid's choir since freshman year and a member of the National Honor Society. Over my time at ARHS, I've made many memories that I'll look back on later. For one, I'll never forget the experiences that I've had doing swimming, like reaching and shaving my hair every year. I also won't forget going to homeroom and chatting with my friends at the beginning of each day. In addition to these, I'll remember some of the interesting classes that I've been able to take. During my junior year, I took Mr. Coet's AP US History class, which involved learning about everything from early colonial times all the way to present-day events. By taking this course, it allowed me to view our country from a variety of perspectives and showed me the extent to which past events have impacted us today. Another class I enjoyed was physics with Mrs. Mills, which I took as an honors course during my junior year and an AP course this past year. In this class, I was able to gain a much better understanding of how the natural world works and how math, which is my favorite subject, can be applied to any of the topics that we discussed. Not only did I find some of the courses phenomenal, but I felt the same way about the people who taught them. Mr. Coet, my AP US History teacher, always set the bar high in his class and expected the very best from my peers and I. He constantly pushed us to improve our writing skills and to look at historical events through multiple lenses, not just one. Mrs. Mills, my physics teacher, encouraged us to ask questions about the subject matter we were learning and would always make sure that everyone understood it. Because of this attitude, she kept us interested in the class and often led us to seek further information on the material. Lastly, I'd like to go further back in time and recognize my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Boulas, who would always say to be a leader, not a follower. From then until now, I've stood by this advice and learned that in any endeavor, one should not be satisfied with a mediocre effort, even though, even when others are. If not any of the faculty at ARHS or the rest of the district, I'd like to thank my parents for supporting me throughout my time as a student. Whether it be helping me with my homework, going to my swim meets, going to my swim meets, or just giving me advice, there are so many things I couldn't have done without them. Also because of them, I feel well-prepared to enter the next chapter of my life, which is going to college. This fall, I plan to attend Bryan University and major in actuarial science. If all goes to plan, I intend to pursue a career in the field after graduating and receiving my degree. Before I conclude, I'd like to thank Mr. Mederos and the rest of the school committee for the renovations that were recently made to the gray school, which include a new HVAC system and floor tiles. For years, I've been involved in the programs and activities that this pool has to offer, like swim lessons, vault swim teams, and lifeguard training. I'm glad to see that the pool will continue to operate and provide these same opportunities to others down the road. Thank you and have a great night.
Owen Foster.
Good evening. I'd like to say before we begin that I tried to kind of take a creative approach here, and you might like it, but it might be a disaster, so we'll see what happens. If it's, if it's a ladder, please say it behind my back. Extremely self-conscious. All right, so, the most common use for a bridge is as a means of transportation from one location to another, and my time at Apoonequid has been a major bridge in my young adult life. And when I woke up on the morning of December 15th last year, I was inundated with different emotions. Now, not only did I have multiple AP tests that I had studied, well, the right word would be crammed, I crammed forth the night before, but I was also set to receive my early admissions decision from Bentley University. Now, attending Bentley University had been a personal aspiration of mine since the middle of sophomore year. Now, 21 months later, I was accepted early decision and got a very generous merit scholarship to help defray costs. Now, as I spent most of my high school years focused on the next step in life, I was able to really grow as a person. I participated in multiple community service projects during this time. I prepared meals for the homeless population of New Bedford and spent over 100 hours volunteering with the Freetown Historical Society. And during this time, I archived old pictures, wrote newspaper articles, and assisted the museum staff in different ways. I have also had multiple workplace experiences, and I have been fortunate enough to have the chance to participate in four seasons of track and field. Now, I reached and eclipsed many of my personal goals. Now, in the classroom, I also challenged myself and found new limits. Of the many honors and AP courses I have taken, AP Calculus has been one of my favorites, because while the content was not always the most interesting, and it was still a positive experience for me in that I felt academically inferior for one of the first times in my high school career. I received my first B minus in calculus, and it was eye-opening to see that not everyone was having as difficult of a time with the course content as I was. Now, in attending a selective university, I have come to understand that this isn't the last time I'm gonna feel academically or physically or personally inferior. I'm gonna have to continuously overcome the inferiority complex. Now, AP Psychology, which was another one of my favorite courses, I believe that Mr. Giolando took an immense amount of time to very thoroughly explain the course content in a way that made the AP exam very manageable, a lot less daunting than it would have been, and this is highly worthy of commendation. And my most far-reaching academic endeavor during my high school career was enrolling in AP History during my junior year, AP US History, in addition to doing an obnoxious amount of summer work in the final 48 hours of summer. And, that's, that's pretty much 100% of it. So it's like four outlines of current events and whatever have you. That was a disaster. Now, in addition to doing that amount of work, workload was fairly difficult during the year, but I was able to learn about balancing a lot of different perspectives. Mr. Coet did a very good job of entertaining viewpoints from all different ends of the political spectrum. He carried some beliefs of my own that may not have been almost conventional, but he was always very respectful of them, and we always pretty much entertained...
I'm still deciding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is good for you.
It's great. Thank you.
I'll get him anyway.
There you go.
Doesn't work out, it's got a floor polisher.
Absolutely.
Bob's having too much.
Tell him it's too late for any of that to rub off, any of this intelligence to rub off on you.
Shannon Carmichael.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shannon Carmichael. I'd like to thank the school committee for inviting my peers and me to this meeting as a student voice is a fundamental part of any school system. Over the past four years, I was able to take advantage of all the great things Aponiquet has offered to its students. I played lacrosse all four years and I currently serve as captain of my team. I played field hockey up until my junior year and ran winter track as well. A lot of my fondest memories, therefore, derive from my participation in school sports, most notably the bus rides home from away games. In addition to athletics, I'm a member of the art club and environmental club. Student government has also played an important role in my development, development as a student and a person. I have been my class's treasurer for three years and a class representative for one. I have also served as a committee chair for various student council facilitated events. I believe that student leadership is a vital part of a student's career and I am forever thankful to the opportunities Aponiquet has offered me in this regard. Aponiquet has challenged me academically throughout the course of my time here by offering rigorous AP and honors classes that bring out previously unfounded potential in students. A specific challenging class I have taken is AP European History with Mr. Cody. This class is based off of primary source documents and chapter lectures with quizzes and tests that require a complete understanding of the, of the subject. Upon reflection, however, I realize that I have progressed a great deal as a student with this class and my writing and analysis skills have largely enhanced. I'd like to note that I do not believe I would be the same person I am today without the guidance and wisdom of various school personnel, one of whom being Mr. Coet. Mr. Coet was my sophomore US History teacher and my AP United States History teacher as well. My fondest academic memory was my sophomore year when Mr. Coet made our class simulate how the impeachment trial for President Andrew Jackson may have carried out. He chose me as a defense lawyer, which, as silly as it may sound, helped me to understand that I want to pursue law. Mr. Coet knows how to teach without relying on lectures, which I, which I have found often leads to a deeper understanding of the material and helped me achieve a five on the AP push exam. Mrs. Nardi has also greatly impacted me. She was my Spanish teacher for both Spanish III and AP Spanish. With her, learning has always been easy due to her obvious love for her job. The time and effort she puts, she puts into each lesson is evident in the easy retention of her students. My art teacher, Ms. Lima, has also greatly influenced me and challenged me to incorporate creativity into everything I do. I'd like to express thanks to my parents for pushing me to be the best person, the best version of myself, and my friends who have acted as an unbreakable support system along with my teachers, who have helped me find my direction in life. Next year, I will be attending Boston College studying international relations and history with a minor in Spanish on a pre-law track. I'm excited to be attending my dream school and I'm thankful for all the resources this school has offered me to help me get to this point. In the future, I hope to advocate for worthy causes by possibly pursuing international law. To leave off with a piece of advice to the school committee, I urge to reconsider the rising price of athletics. School sports are a fundamental part of high school. They help students to realize new passions and make new friends, and to make the class less successful would be to end with the disability of the students. Thank you again for taking into consideration the voice of the students and thank you to everyone who attended tonight.
Hello, my name is Nicole Bouzanne. Thank you to the committee members for inviting us tonight and to all family members for attending. I am honored to be here. I have attended school in this district from kindergarten through high school and I, and I am proud to be here tonight to speak about my experiences. Throughout high school, I've received various science awards, the Abigail Adams Scholarship, and I recently received a full tuition and housing scholarship, Advent Scholarship to the University of Colorado Boulder, all which would not have been achievable without the help of teachers and other staff in this district. I would like to give a special thanks to both Mrs. Ferreira and Mrs. Nardi, who have truly enhanced my high school experience with their kindness and the way they put each and every student before themselves. I had Mrs. Ferreira for AP Bio, which is the most difficult class I've taken in high school. However, she made it a point to always be there for her students and one above and beyond to make sure she did her job in preparing us to the best of her ability, ultimately helping me achieve a five on the AP Bio exam. I, I had Mrs. Nardi this year for AP Spanish and was amazed by the way she cared for us like we were her own. She consistently went out of her way to motivate us to work hard, even making us a video before we took the exam with encouraging words from her and her children. Overall, I believe the staff here at Aponiquet deserves a lot of recognition for the way they care about the success of every student and work towards helping them achieve their full potential. Most of my fondest memories are from Mr. Coet's history classes. He was my history teacher for three years and I have never had a teacher that does a better job at getting students involved in what they are learning. He does this with many heated debates, rap battles, and group projects, which use our competitiveness to our advantage and pushes to me more engaged in every lesson. I also need to thank my family for helping me along the way. If it wasn't for their constant support, I would not be where I am today and I am forever grateful for that. Next year, I will continue my education at the University of Colorado Boulder with a major in integrative physiology on a pre-med track. I hope to work in pediatrics, either as a pediatrician or physician assistant. On the topic of advice to school, to give to the school committee, I understand that there's a lot about the budget that we as students do not know, but I feel as though the increase in sports prices will result in a decrease in participation. There are many students that participate in a sport in order to stay active or involved in school activities, and in my opinion, this should be encouraged because it adds to their high school experience. However, the dramatic increases in prices for the upcoming year will lead kids to be less likely to try a new sport or participate at all. Once again, thank you for having me and everything you all do for this district. We are so grateful.
Congratulations. Hannah Darling.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hannah Darling. Thank you for having me here tonight. As most of you do not know me, I would like to begin by telling you a little about myself. Since freshman year, I have participated in many after-school activities and have held multiple leadership positions. I have been my class secretary for four years, a member of the National Honor Society, Green Team, and Art Club, a four-year member of student council, and a three-sport varsity athlete. I have received multiple science course awards and other academic and athletic achievements, as well as being named captain for the field hockey, indoor track, and outdoor track teams. The clubs and extracurriculars that I have participated in have created some of my fondest memories of my time spent at Aponiquet, as they have allowed me to step out of my comfort zone, try new things, and meet people from other grades who I never would have had a chance to meet otherwise. Aside from extracurriculars, I also have had many fond memories pertaining to academics. My most challenging classes this year were definitely AP Calculus and AP Physics. However, these, along with AP Environmental Science, were my most interesting classes because my teachers were very passionate about their subjects and their classes were very well organized and required a lot of conceptual thinking and problem-solving. These teachers took a step outside traditional classroom standards and challenged us to think more and collaborate with our peers in order to succeed. These teachers have impacted my life so much and have helped me to become a better student through a challenging course load while also maintaining, also maintaining a lighthearted and supportive atmosphere in the classroom. I would like to thank these teachers, Mrs. Kirk, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Gray, for everything they have done and will continue to do for me in the future. I would also like to thank my family, friends, coaches, and other teachers for supporting me and helping me, helping to shape me into the woman I am today. With their help, I have discovered my potential and figured out who I am today and who I want to be in the future. Next year, I will be attending Roger Williams University, where I will study environmental engineering and sustainability studies. While in college, I also plan to become a member of Engineers Without Borders in the Society of Women Engineers. In the future, I aspire to help less-developed countries live more sustainably, sustainably, in order to positively exploit my time towards helping others and making the world a better place. I know that alone I cannot solve all of the world's problems, but I can at least get my feet pointed in the right direction and help others do so as well. On this note, one piece of advice that I have to improve our amazing school district is to simply increase our environmental awareness and reduce our impact by either installing solar panels on the roofs of each school as a form of more sustainable power, or something as simple as having more cycling bins for cans, paper, and water bottles. Even just starting with something small is a step in the right direction. As my time here comes to a close, I would like to wrap up by expressing my gratitude to you all for allowing me to speak tonight and for granting me the opportunity to share my experiences with you. Thank you.
We would have gone to our own direction.
First, I'd like to thank the school committee for having us here and allowing us to share our high school experiences with all of you. I consider myself a very typical high school student. I spent my four years at this school playing soccer and tennis, attending plays and basketball games, and taking a lot of naps. I've enjoyed so much being a part of this school and definitely took advantage of the little time I had here, serving as class president the first three years, being a member of DECA the final two, and being a member of our ARHS Green Team and accompanying the Aswamsa Elementary School on the piano in their past two concerts this year. I have endless gratitude for the amazing staff and students in this district. Those thanks I have are indescribable words will have to suffice for tonight. From Mr. Berry, who challenged me in eighth grade algebra, to Mr. Kucher, who guided me through my Patriots-Penn competition at the state level, from Mrs. Brown and Miss Libman, our class advisors, to Mr. Kelly, someone who's always thinking outside the box. Miss Ferreira's AP Bio class taught me how to study effectively, while Miss Gray's AP Calc class taught me how to think deeper. It is through my classes that I have learned content, but through my teachers that I have learned invaluable and unforgettable techniques that will carry me through college and beyond. In addition to my teachers, my supportive family has helped me grow and be successful in high school. My older sister Jenna has taught me how to truly accept others. My sister Addie has shown me what it means to be brave when faced with adversity. My younger brother Eldon has been my voice of reality and reason in times of stress. My dad has shown me determination and has always been my biggest supporter. And my mom has been selfless day in and day out, always putting me before herself in every way she can. It is because of my family and my teachers that my high school experience, that throughout my high school experience, I have been honored to receive first place in the Voice of Democracy Essay Competition we have here, be a recipient, a recipient of the Harvard Book Award, and was named the Standard Times 2017 Female Athlete of the Year. I thank all the people who have relayed their lessons to me because I now enter a new stage of my life wiser and better prepared. This next step for me will be at Bryant University, where I will study international business and biology and play Division One tennis as a bulldog. Aponiquet has been great to me and I would love to see it do the same to everybody else that enters. It is for this reason that I advise the school committee to invest in a computer science program here. As I have learned this year through VHS, taking a college-level computer science class is a very difficult jump with limited background on the subject. I fear that students interested in this major may not have the tools to succeed in college if they have no prior experience in the field. The information technology and programming fields are fast-growing and it would be wonderful if the school district could find it in the budget to hire someone to teach computer science classes. Again, thank you to everyone who has bettered my high school experience. I will forever hold the memories of countless laps in Miss Nardi's Alpe Espanol class, building a cardboard chair that held over 400 pounds in engineering, researching the chemical glyphosate contained in herbicides as my final project in AP Bio, and of course, those extremely competitive gym class volleyball games. I've truly been given the gift of a great education here at Aponiquet and through each of my 13 years at this school district. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you all. Thank you. Wonderful speeches, each and every one of you. At this time, I'd just like to call a short recess so that we can, we can mingle.
We have refreshments.
And we have refreshments. Please.
Okay. So on your old business, we have FY '18 budget progress report.
Looking at the revenue side of the budget today, we are doing fairly well on that side of it. The state aid appears to be holding up. We have a number of payments that are due on the 30th of this month and we'll be able to tell better from there, but it seems to be holding up. We've done pretty well with Medicaid reimbursement, about $40,000 more than we had anticipated. So that side of it's pretty good. The expenditure side is still very close. We're trying to hold down the expenditures for the remainder of the year, but we'll know a lot more as we get into the early part of June.
In addition, so at our next school committee meeting, we'll have a couple of votes for the committee in relation to some bids.
Yeah, we have a couple of bids that we're gonna bring in. One is on fuel and the other one is the management and testing of the wastewater system. They're items we've typically done. The fuel one is a single year and the wastewater system is a three-year contract.
Can you talk a little bit about where we're at with the legal? I know that was a, of the legal budget item, yeah.
Yeah, we, we're over about $65,000.
We did recently receive a decision that was incurred quite a bit of cost, so as a result, and we also are looking at a little different strategy in relation to the upcoming negotiations, so hopefully we'll be able to curtail additional costs between now and the rest of the year.
Yeah, and the, it's important to note that the legal is, even if this weren't a collective bargaining year, we computer science classes. Again, thank you to everyone who has bettered my high school experience. I will forever hold the memories of countless laughs in Miss Nardi's Alpe Espanol class, building a cardboard chair that held over 400 pounds in engineering, researching the chemical glyphosate contained in herbicides as my final project in AP Bio, and of course, those extremely competitive gym class volleyball games. I've truly been given the gift of a great education here at Aponaquit in through each of my 13 years at this school district. Thank you.
I would sign out right now.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you all. Thank you. Wonderful speeches, each and every one of you. At this time, I'd just like to call a short recess so that we can mingle.
We have refreshments.
And we have refreshments. Please.
Okay. So on your old business, we have FY18 budget progress report.
Looking at the revenue side of the budget today, we are doing fairly well on that side of it. The state aid appears to be holding up. We have a number of payments that are due on the 30th of this month, and we'll be able to tell better from there, but it seems to be holding up. We've done pretty well with Medicaid reimbursement, about $40,000 more than we had anticipated. So that side of it's pretty good. The expenditure side is still very close. We're trying to hold down the expenditures for the remainder of the year, but we'll know a lot more as we get into the early part of June.
Fred, addition, so at our next school committee meeting, we'll have a couple of votes for the committee in relation to some bids?
Yeah, we have a couple of bids that we're going to bring in. One is on fuel, and the other one is the management and testing of the wastewater system. They're items we've typically done. The fuel one is a single year, and the wastewater system is a three-year contract.
Steve?
Can you talk a little bit about where we're at with the legal? I know that was a...
The legal budget item, yeah.
Yeah, we're over about $65,000.
We did recently receive a decision that was incurred quite a bit of cost. So as a result, and we also are looking at a little different strategy in relation to the upcoming negotiations, so hopefully we'll be able to curtail additional costs between now and the rest of the year.
Yeah, and it's important to note that the legal is, even if this weren't a collective bargaining year, we'd still be substantially over in the legal. A lot of it has to do with special ed, and a fair amount of it has to do with other student issues and a few administrative issues. So, you know, while the collective bargaining is a component, that's not the major source of the problem.
Fred, is it fair to say we haven't actually made any Indeed determination at this point? We're still holding steady with that. Here we are, May 23rd.
Right, yeah. We've got a couple more payrolls to go, and we want to see where we are on those. It may well be that I come back and ask you for authorization at the next meeting to use E&amp;D without really knowing whether we'll have to or not, but we don't want to be in a situation where we would have to use it to close the books and didn't have authorization, so.
Anybody else have anything regarding the 18 budget? Okay, thank you. Okay, the 18-19 school committee calendar.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. I personally have a few questions slash suggestions. October, we only have one meeting, which honestly I think is fine. I would just question whether we should move that meeting to the 17th in the middle of the month. And then there's just one, there's actually January, as we start budget season. We had talked about actually having our working meeting on a Wednesday. I would like to propose to have two meetings in the month of January, and then realistically, we always have two in the month of February as well. I'm not looking to schedule more meetings for anybody, but I also, I mean, we can leave it as is if everyone would like for now and schedule the additional meeting if we feel it's necessary, but typically January and February, we always have two meetings regarding...
I didn't think we always did in January.
No?
I just don't remember.
I mean, we do have, as far as the October meeting, I would certainly suggest sincerely that if that adjustment needs to be made, it should be made as part of the motion. With the January, February, I still think you have a little flexibility to make some determination. We're really trying to encourage some joint meetings with town officials, so I think we could probably leave it as is and then make either an additional meeting add-on based on that. It might be a different night and/or move that timeframe around, just a suggestion at this point.
If that's what the committee feels, I have no problem, no problem doing that. I just want to throw it out there. Derek?
Yeah, I'm not for changing anything. If anything in October, I'd leave that in case we needed the extra date. Now, if you throw it in the middle, we have no ability to schedule an extra date, which we typically don't at that early in the year. The other thing with January and February is, I like leaving the single dates, because Finance Committee tends to be a moving target, and then we could schedule a meeting around when the Finance Committee meeting happens, if we need that extra meeting. It'd be nice, around that time of year, we're looking for Finance meeting input, so I'd rather wait for that meeting, because, you know, the Finance Committee schedule gets moved around at points in time. So I'd rather wait, so that way we could schedule after a Finance Committee, if necessary.
Sherry?
Yeah, I was going to ask to stick with just the one in January and see how it plays out, as Rick said.
Steve?
The only one that I just wanted to, obviously the way June falls next year, I would assume that graduation would be June 7th. So, as we just finished this meeting, is May 20th too soon for the, you know what I mean? So that would be the only thing to keep in mind as we look at that.
I'm not sure, Steve, that that 7th is true, though. It may actually be as early as the 31st. I wish, I would have asked Barbara.
But then with that...
What are you talking about, then, the top 10 type of thing, and when that would be, yeah?
But again, there's still plenty of time, just something to...
Well, if it was the 31st, we'd do it on the 22nd.
Yeah, we'd move it up to that.
Right. If it was graduation, 31st would apply.
Okay, so we're leaving, the consensus is to leave the schedule as is?
I'd like to move to leave it as is for now.
I'll second.
We already have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
We already have a motion and a second as is.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, yeah, we did.
Hearing no further discussion, I call a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? We're good. Okay, and FY19 budget?
So I've emailed, and Mr. Baker can certainly jump in with Ashley, but we have received confirmation from both Board of Selectmen and both Free Town and Lakeville that they've taken formal action and voted to approve our budget. I spoke to the Chair of the Lakeville Selectmen this morning to confirm that. They had their meeting last night and confirmed that through email. Also heard that and forwarded that information to the board in Free Town Lakeville. It is my understanding both the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee took formal action to vote and approve. The Free Town Finance Committee did not have a quorum that night and is planning to meet later this week. I'm not sure if it's tonight or tomorrow night, but was told that we should be informed in relation. And the sense I received from that group, because we did, Mr. Baker and I did meet with each of all four groups, was positive. So it looks like we are on track. It's probably, you know, worth discussion. For this group, last year, we chose to have a meeting prior to town meeting. They're both on the same date. I don't necessarily think that's necessary. We had to take formal action. We probably should discuss some strategy in relations to representation at the meetings, because obviously our next school committee meeting's after town meeting, but I think we should be cautiously optimistic. Both the chairs that I spoke to for both towns simply want to be sure we're all on the same page, and I think we are, at least for the first time in my tenure in four years, it looks like going into, you know, both meetings with full support from both groups. I think there was some question on the Lakeville side and speaking to the Chair about there being one vote, and would two-thirds be necessary on that extra portion of that, the taking from stabilization, but they said they would address that, and that doesn't change the dynamics, other than potentially having $70,000 requiring a two-thirds vote. He's going to get clarification from the town moderator in relation to that, but I didn't get a sense that there wasn't support at all. Steve, I think you, as Regional FinCom Chair, would say the same thing, right?
Yeah. I think the only concern was just, I think in the Lakeville meeting, that we need to go supporting the number that we approved, and if there's any change on the floor to that, that we need to stick to what we have voted on, what we've gone through that aspect of it, and that's been a concern for both boards in the Lakeville side.
Yeah, the concern was that someone make a motion to give the school department additional funding above and beyond what we requested.
Well, we've already voted, can't go up.
Well, and we did explain that circumstance, but I think they just wanted verification that the committee would be prepared, or representative from the committee would be prepared, or administration to respond to that aspect if that were to take place.
Do you have any ideas on how we divide the troops that night? Obviously...
Free Town, Lakeville.
Free Town, Lakeville, but as far as the leadership.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, normally, I certainly would defer both the Chair and Vice Chair and the Board, you know, in situations where you felt my presence was necessary, or Mr. Baker's, I don't get that sense. I really don't. I think...
Oh, you're trying to bail?
No, I think we should, I think one should be at one meeting. No, no, what I'm saying is I don't think there's a preference where it's needed that we go to one versus the other. I think we should be represented at both. I think Mr. Baker should be in one town, I should be in the other, and we'll just take your lead as to what that should be. Yeah, I don't have a preference either way.
Well, I think you can flip a coin. I mean, do you have anybody else?
Based on past history, I would like to see you at Lakeville and at Free Town.
The other times that, as you said, I mean, the other times that it's been the same night, that's how we've done it, seemed to work.
You've come to it. It's always a fun time.
Does anybody... Steve?
So, the only request I have for the administration is come up with a strategy in how to update this board on that 125 number, right? So, the plan is that addition, the ultimate goal is that 125, we want to be at this meeting next year, it's going into E&amp;D.
And how we identify that within the budget and then keep...
Exactly.
...track of that piece.
Right, so what is it, whether that line item of the budget is highlighted and we can see that 125 being there?
We have made a concerted effort to say it falls under special education and tuitions directly, so although that's on a separate piece, we would then just need to monitor that amount and make sure.
Obviously, there are going to be ongoing discussions if we need to do that, but I think in the conversations we've had, with the respective boards, anything that we go above, we want to include them for additional funding requests, right?
They want to see where that is within our budget and that it's maintained. We'll have to just kind of, I think we can do that in any line, but specifically what the concern was in special education, I think that's probably where it belongs, and then we just monitor that.
Perfect.
Can we just clarify one thing, because you said something important, and I think this was agreed upon at FinCon. Is anything above and beyond, the 125 was not meant to be, if there's an incident that we had a couple of years ago, where we had an influx of special ed costs, that's not the intent of that 125, and we're going to go to the towns for that money in the event that kind of returns...
And just to be clear, Derek, I agree with you. Our intent will be, through Ashley and myself, will be to monitor that, and if in fact we have encumbered money and get to that limit, it will then be up to us to go back to the towns and look for additional monies, not to expend that 125.
That's correct.
So in my opinion, our sped tuition line, when it gets to 125, it's zero.
It's zero.
In relation to FY19, and we at least heard verbally from town officials that we should be going back to them and asking for additional money, so.
I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think town meeting will necessarily be clear on that.
No, everybody gets selective and needs you at a certain point in time.
Anything else for FY19?
I don't know if anybody else has any questions, so we just...
No? I think everybody's good at this point, right?
Yeah, we will not, so the request that Renee had received from the Town of Lakeville, we're posting for a meeting, I don't think, because we won't have a quorum, will be necessary to post a school committee meeting that night.
Okay. There's no reports to the committee, subcommittee updates. We're good. Is there any other business that may properly come before the meeting?
I do have a couple of items. Hate to get in front of the adjourn. And I know some, maybe some, I have one in relation to negotiations to the group, so we have one bargaining group, and it's not necessarily for an executive session. We have a request from the clerical and paraprofessional group, and I sent it to the subcommittee. I just want to confirm that we had two, they had outlined two dates for an initial meeting, June 6th earlier before the school committee meeting, or June 7th at 6 o'clock. They understood that it was probably going to be the latter. I just want to confirm that. I told, I'd pulled the President of the Association, so if, I'm seeing some kind of some head nods for our subcommittee, that we'll schedule the first negotiation session with them for Thursday.
Would you confirm that? Will you contact us again?
I'll send, yeah, I'll send. I will absolutely send that. I do want to confirm that tonight, though, so the first meeting for that group.
Yeah, Steve could do both, but you'd have a problem.
Really, okay.
But it's tough for us to get, yeah, four is hard.
Okay, that's something to think, especially, yeah, we talked about ground rules. They're prepared to make unlimited proposals first day, and so I just wanted to make sure the group is aware. I actually had initiated the request several weeks ago, just so this group knows. We were hoping to get started with this process, and they kind of were pushing it out a little bit, trying to, I'm not sure why, but, so we do have really the month of June. We have, I mean, the contract extends beyond that, but, so I'm working this summer, so if it carries through. I was just a little surprised, I'll be honest with you, that it's the first week in June. We had read requests that we were trying to do something the last week or two in May, but the request is June 6th, the 7th. I'll confirm the 7th, and I'll send a note back out to the group.
Thank you.
So the other item, maybe Laura might want to speak to, that I had down was in relation to the Director of Student Service position.
Right, so we met last week. The committee considered 28 applicants that applied for the position. We met last week to interview candidates. We met again yesterday afternoon after Rick had had a chance to talk to references and check certifications and things like that. We have agreed as a committee to put two candidates forward to meet the administrative team, which will take place next week, with hopefully a recommendation coming out of that for our June 6th meeting.
So two candidates, administrative team on the 29th, Tuesday afternoon, then based on that, the search committee and Laura representing the school committee as part of that would be prepared to either send candidate or candidates forward. One conversation I don't want to hold people up, but we should discuss, is we could, I don't see it being extensive schedule on June 6th. I know we have tried to do interviews on separate nights, but I think we should probably try to work with an hour regular school committee meeting and then have two interviews, if people are comfortable with that, on June 6th. I'd like to proceed and move with this. We do have Ellen with the transition through June and July and working with that individual, but I think the sooner we can do it, the better, so I would...
Yeah, I'm for the 6th.
And we can either do that prior to the meeting or after. I can talk to the Chair and Vice Chair about scheduling when to do that, but we'll target June 6th, is what I've been saying to those candidates, that once I meet with them with the leadership team and we get some solid recommendation or recommendations, that you would present on June 6th to this group. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Absolutely. Steve?
I just have a question. New bus schedules. We had a timetable that they were going to go out in June towards the end of the year. Are we still on...
We are, we are. There's been some work behind the scenes in relation to that. There's some back and forth, because the kindergarten students don't get ID numbered, because they aren't finalized, so they've been given, they've been given a set of numbers that will change, not necessarily well received by the bus vendor. I didn't really ask the bus vendor whether they should be well received, but they've been identified. So there's some things working out, but yes, we're proceeding. So we've extracted all the information in advance, and we're maintaining that target. The only adjustment that will have to be made is in the summertime, when those students may get new numbers or new students, but that would happen anyway, Steve, so I don't see anything holding back the process. We've done it on our end, too, so we've been diligent about giving them the information they need to make the proper bus route. So yes, we're prepared.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
There's a couple of dates that are referenced at the bottom. The intermediate school course, senior awards night at Aponaquit, band night at Free Town Lakeville Middle School for the intermediate school, senior banquet, and graduation. And I believe everyone's planning on attending graduation, is that right?
Looks like it.
Almost everyone.
Okay, we're not going in.
You have another important event.
That'll be discussed in the goals meeting.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?